Good morning, all. Today's June 17th, 2025. Dilly County Board of County Commissioners meeting will convene. Good rise for the invocation with Pastor Greg Jackson. Appreciate it very much.
Good morning, everyone. I am so excited to be before you today. It is an honor to be before the Board of Commissioners. Let's go ahead and start off praying for Commissioner Ruane's family. Someone in his family is dealing with a brain cancer. So we want to go ahead and pray for that. Father, we just thank you right now, Lord God, for who you are. And you're still the same yesterday, today, and forever. And Father God, we just ask that your healing power meet this person right where they are right now in the name of Jesus. And we declare in decree of full recovery. Let your will be done in Jesus' mighty name we pray. Amen.
Can I just plug please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're blessed there. Okay, we have four presentations this morning. Each commissioner will have one. I will kick it off. And my presentation is the Pathways to Opportunity Day. Anyone that's here from Southwest Florida regarding goodwill, please feel free to come on up. Anyone? All? When all gather around the podium, what we'll do is we'll have everybody come up. I'll read the proclamation. We'll take a few photos here. I'll then ask one person to speak on behalf of the organization. Okay? The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Goodwill Industries of Southwest Florida is committed to empowering individuals with disabilities by providing life-enriching opportunities that foster independence, inclusion, and personal growth. And whereas Pathways to Opportunity, a program of Goodwill Industries of Southwest Florida, has been instrumental in supporting adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities throughout education, skill building, and community engagement. And whereas since its inception, Pathway to Opportunity has served over 250 individuals, equipping them with tools and resources necessary to embrace their independence, develop life and social skills, and actively participate within the communities. Whereas in Florida, more than 22,000 individuals remain on pre-enrolled wait lists for agencies for persons with disabilities, also known as ABT, services highlighting the critical need for programs like Pathways to Opportunity to provide essential support to those waiting for additional resources. Whereas Pathways to Opportunity has made a long-lasting impact on the lives of the individuals with disabilities, their families, the greater Lee County community by advocating for awareness, acceptance, and the independence of inclusion. And whereas Goodwill Industries of Southwest Florida continues to break down the barriers and expand opportunities for individuals with disabilities, ensuring they have access to resources and the support necessary to thrive. Now therefore, it's been resolved by the Board of County Commissioners, this proclamation dated June 17th, 2025, as Pathways to Opportunity Day in Lee County, and encourage all residents to recognize and celebrate the achievements of individuals with disabilities and the essential role in inclusive programs in strengthening our community. It's signed on June 17th by myself as the chairman. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Come on up. Picture photo with two. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning.
I'm going to stand for a couple of photos. Three, two, one. And three, two, one.
Thank you very much. Sound like yourself your work?
Yes.
Appreciate it. Congratulations.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Jessica Tursey. I'm the Director of Disability Services and Navigation. On behalf of Goodwill Industries Southwest Florida and Pathways to Opportunity, we want to thank the Board of County Commissioners and the community for this incredible honor. Each year, Pathways to Opportunity serves over 100 adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities. They, we help them build life skills, confidence, and independence. Because of PTO success, we were able to start our Discipline Navigation Program that just last year was able to help over 450 families in Southwest Florida to help access supports and services. This proclamation is not about, just about a day. It's about recognizing ability, inclusion, and the power of community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm on the Board of Directors at Goodwill Southwest Florida, and thank you for this honor and this opportunity because to know us is to love us. And most of you, if I asked you, what is Goodwill? You probably would say it's our stores. And that is one of our programs. We have five programs. Pathways to Opportunity is where you get to know us, you're going to love us. These individuals going from home, not having anything to maybe an opportunity to get better, to go out in the world. Pathways to Opportunity opens that door for them. We are helping someone that you may know every single day because we have the opportunity to do so much more, but not everyone does. And Pathways, our favorite program, gives that opportunity to so many people. So thank you for this honor, and we appreciate the recognition. Thank you so much.
Thanks for all you do. The next presentation will be by Commissioner Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, everyone. I would like to ask Amy Kinsey from the 20th Judicial Circuit, Lee County Criminal Division, and her team. Did you bring anybody with you too?
A few.
Great. Come on and stand around the podium, and I'll read this resolution into the record for you, and then we'll take a picture, and we can share a few words after that. You brought a big team with you. We thank you guys for all that you do. Oh, boy. Okay, and while they file up here, I'll begin reading the resolution. You guys do a lot of work, so there's a lot to say. All right. Whereas the community supervision and case management are essential parts of the justice system. And whereas pre-trial and probation professionals are committed to treating everyone with dignity, courtesy, and respect, being responsive and meeting the needs of those they serve, being accessible, fair, effective, and accountable. And whereas pre-trial and probation professionals follow evidence-based practices through universal screening, utilization of validated risk instruments, motivational interviewing, and skill-building techniques. And whereas pre-trial and probation professionals conduct interviews and investigations to provide critical information to aid the court. And whereas pre-trial and probation professionals are responsible for supervising defendants and probationers in the community, enforcing court orders, promoting public safety, and promoting positive behavioral change. And whereas pre-trial and probation professionals provide comprehensive court case management services to assist the court. And whereas pre-trial and probation professionals work in partnership with community agencies and groups and promote prevention, intervention, and advocacy. And whereas pre-trial and probation professionals provide coordination and case management support to problem-solving courts that help change and save lives. And whereas pre-trial and probation professionals are stronger together, collaborate, and foster teamwork. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Lee County, Florida, does hereby proclaim July 20th through July 26th as Pre-Trial and Probation Supervision Week, and encourages all citizens and agency partners to honor these professionals and recognize their commitment to the field. It's signed this 17th day of June by our chairman, Kevin Ruane. Congratulations. I'd like to give this to you. We'd love to give this to you. Bring the whole group up. Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you so much.
We'll try to gather everybody.
Hey, good morning. Make sure I'm getting everyone. Push a little bit in on the side. All right, I'll count us down for two. Three, two, one. And three, two, one. Thank you.
And would somebody say a few words? Amy, have a look.
Thank you, Commissioners, distinguished colleagues, and guests. I stand here before you today to honor, to represent the Lee County Criminal Division, which includes the Lee County Pre-Trial Services, Lee County Probation, and Problem-Solving Courts. We are here to recognize the dedicated professionals you see before you today that conduct intake and investigation of every person arrested in Lee County, Florida, case management supervision of those placed on pre-trial supervision misdemeanor diversion and county probation. It takes true passion to be successful in this type of work. I saw a quote the other day that resonated with me. People do not care what you know until they know that you care. These officers care. They're committed to helping defendants be successful and stay out of the justice system. They genuinely show their care. They offer support and guidance that many in this population have never received in their entire life. They make a difference. Court order conditions are enforced, but officers use motivational interviewing skills, skill-building techniques, and they help build resilience and motivate positive behavioral change within the justice system. They provide tools and links to resources in the community. We are very proud of the work they do and feel they are the best of the best. We continue to promote pre-trial justice and public safety and hold those accountable for their actions. And we would like to thank the Trial Court Administrator, the Deputy Chief Court Administrator, and the Commission for your unwavering support and recognition of this important week and the work that they do.
I'm honored we got recognized you today. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. The next presentation will be by Commissioner Malika.
Sir. Good morning. Welcome Jane Joy to the podium. And any of her guests, remotes? Good morning.
Good morning.
So. So welcome. So my proclamation is, whereas Janine Joy, President and CEO of United Way of Lee, Hendry and Glades, is celebrating 30 years of commitment to the organization, having joined the organization in 1995 as a campaign associate and serving as Vice President of Resource Development prior to being named President and CEO in June of 2019. And whereas Janine has dedicated three decades of her career with United Way to its mission to improve the quality of life for all people in our community by forging powerful relationships with local and national foundations, philanthropists, and corporations to bring much-needed supplies to Southwest Florida and enlist the assistance of more than 500 volunteers. And whereas Janine leads the organization of more than 80 team members, champions its work with over 90 community partner agencies, and oversees more than 260 programs and initiatives designed to support the residents of the three counties it serves. And whereas Janine has demonstrably made a positive and significant difference in the community, helping to raise over $230 million while collaborating with hundreds of community leaders as well as leading the organization through challenging community crises such as Hurricanes Irma, Ian, Milton, and Helene, and the COVID-19 pandemic. Now be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Lee County does hereby recognize Janine Joy, President and CEO of United Way of Lee, Hendry, and Glades for her invaluable and formidable impact on the residents of Lee County for the past 30 years. Congratulations.
Good morning. I'm going to stand for a couple of photos. Three, two, one. And three, two, one.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Jane? Say a few words?
Yes, thank you. This is such an honor, and I had my team members and our board members come up because this isn't just about me. I get to work for 80 amazing staff members, a board of 63 that are incredible. Over the past three decades, I have met so many generous people, and the success of a person is who they surround themselves with. And I want to thank our stakeholders, many of whom are here today, of course, School District of Lee County, FGCU, Lee Health, and of course, the Board of County Commissioners. We've done so much good work together. It wouldn't be possible without these partnerships. So my success is your success, and anyone's struggle is our struggle at United Way. So you have my commitment that as long as I'm here, I'm going to fight for the people of our community and make sure we do the best we can. So thank you again for this honor.
Thank you so much.
And if I could just add for a moment, Mr. Chair, this is the actual, the second time I've read this proclamation to Janine. I had the honor of surprising her at the last board meeting, and she's not much for surprises, so everybody in the room knew about it before she did. And, but her amazing board and all the accolades and honors she received from the state and global organization was just an honor to be there. So thank you for sharing that with me.
Thanks so much.
Congrats.
Congrats. And the fourth presentation is by Commissioner Greenwell.
All right. Thanks, Chairman. Could I get Mac Young, Parks and Rec Director, and Kathy Loomis, Parks and Rec Deputy Director, and some staff to come on up? And I'll read the proclamation, and we'll get a picture. And I'm sure Mac could have a few words for us. All right. The proclamation reads, whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of the communities throughout the country, including Lee County. And whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health, wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks. And whereas Parks Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And whereas Park and Recreation's programming and education activities such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education of the critic, is critical to childhood development. And whereas Parks and Recreation increases community economic prosperity through increased property value, expansion of local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Park and Recreation is a fundamental, is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. As whereas Parks and Recreation is essential adaptable infrastructure that makes our community resilient and face of nature, natural disasters, and climate change. As whereas other parks and natural creations areas ensure ecological beauty of community and provide place for children and adults to connect with nature and create outdoor space. Whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Park and Recreation Month. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Lee County Commissioners recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources and does hereby declare, proclaim July 2025 Parks and Recreation Month. And Lee County urges all citizens to visit the parks, especially on the weekend of July the 26th and 27th, 2025. When parking fees will be waived, Lee County Regional Parks, beaches, and boat ramps emissions will be free, and county community pools. Doely executed the 17th day of June 2025 by our chairman, Kevin Ruane.
Congratulations.
Act like you guys like each other. All right. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mac, you're going to say a few words?
Absolutely. Good morning, Commissioners. This resolution is an opportunity for our community and our local leaders to acknowledge the importance of Park and Recreation and the benefits it provides to our residents of Lee County and the thousands of visitors that visit our great county throughout the year. We'd like to thank all of you guys, all the Commissioners supporting us throughout the year, our county manager, all the Assistant County Managers, all the work that you guys do. We appreciate you so much. And also want to thank our great team of Parks and Rec staff here, and all the ones that could make it today. They're awesome. They do a great job, and all the hard work and dedication, we appreciate that. As Commissioner Greenwell said, we want the community to come out Saturday, July 26th, and Sunday, July 27th for free parking, free preserves, boat ramps, and also to all our pools for no charge. If anyone wants to know other information about our department, visit leecountylee parks.org, and you get more information. We appreciate everybody, and come out and enjoy the month of July for Parks and Recreation. Thank you.
Super. That was great. Now we'll move on to the recap. Gentlemen, just some items in the recap. We're going to, my suggestion is, as long as everyone approves, is we'll go through the consent agenda. We'll finish the consent agenda, reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. We have six consent items. We'll do it after that. We'll then reconvene back as the Board of County Commissioners. Is everyone okay with that order?
Yep.
County Attorney, you need a motion for that?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. With that in mind, I'll go to the consent agenda. Commissioner Hammond, any items you'd like to pull?
No, Mr. Chairman, but I do see an item on the recap that asks us to continue PH 59 to the August 5th, 2025 board meeting, so I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. Thank you so much. I have a motion to second. Anyone in public comment? See, none, I'll close, public comment. I'll bring it back up here. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And I have no other items. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Malika.
Item 21, please.
Item 21. Okay. Commissioner Greenwell.
I have none.
Great. With that in mind, can I entertain a motion for the balance?
I'll settle with Mr. Chairman. I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Hammond, a second by Commissioner Greenwell. We'll go to public comment. Anyone for public comment? See, none, I'll close, public comment. I'll bring it back up to the dais. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now we'll move over to item 21. Commissioner Malika, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I brought this item before you. I pulled this a couple of weeks ago or two meetings ago. This is regarding the remodel and budget for the Clerk's Office, and we asked our staff to, gave them direction to see if we could do some value engineering and save our budget on that item. And since we're in the spirit of budget season today, I wanted to point out the good work they did on this project. So in, I think, four short weeks, staff came back to us with this, their cost savings of 19.8%, almost $600,000. So I hope that trend continues the rest of the day. But I just wanted to point out good work and a good example of asking good questions and the Clerk's willingness to modify their budget on this project. So thank you for that.
Wonderful.
I have a motion to approve it.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Malika, a second by Commissioner Hammond. I'll go to public comment. Any public comment? See, none, I'll bring it back up to the dais. Any other discussion? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. We'll move on to administrative agenda. County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item is to execute CDBGDR funding agreement for affordable housing rehabilitation projects. I'd like to ask Mr. Salyer to present the item.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. You have four CDBGDR affordable housing projects today for your consideration. These are all rehabilitation of existing units sponsored by the City of Fort Myers Housing Authority or its nonprofit affiliate, the Southwest Florida Affording Housing, Affordable Housing Choice Foundation. We are bringing this item to you a little bit earlier than we normally do in our process. The Housing Authority is still working on some items that we need to get to closing, but if you authorize the chair to sign each of these funding agreements and loan documents as we get ready for closing, the Housing Authority will be able to undertake the work that much sooner. So we just wanted to get it to you in advance. I can answer any questions you have, and I know a representative of the Housing Authority is here as well.
Any questions? No questions? I'll make a motion. We approve.
I'll second that, Chairman.
I have a motion to second on the floor. I'll go to public comment. Any public comment? See, none, I'll close, public comment. I'll bring it back up to the dais. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. County Manager, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the approved operating agreement for Lee Hendry landfill. I'd like to ask Rebecca Rodriguez to present the item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Rebecca Rodriguez, Interim Solid Waste Director. I've got your agenda item number 56 to award a 10-year contract to Waste Management of Florida for the operation of the Lee Hendry landfill. The agreement was competitively procured and replaces an existing 30-year contract. The not-to-exceed amount for first-year services is $8.2 million. I'm available to answer any questions.
Any questions? No questions whatsoever. Thank you for your presentation. I'll move the item.
I'll second it.
I have a motion to second on the floor. I'll go to public comment. Any public comment? See, none, I'll close, public comment. I'll bring it back up to the dais. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. County Manager, next item, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Chair. This is an award of contract for professional services for Moss Marina Booster Pump Station. I'd like to ask Pam Keys to present the item.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is an important item for Lee County Utilities and the town of Fort Myers Beach. Currently, we have a, the town of Fort Myers Beach has a water booster station located at the Moss Marina on the island. This is an aged booster station that has reached its useful life. It's also was damaged during Hurricane Ian. We are working with the town to relocate that booster station on mainland. We're using CDBGDR grants to replace it with all of the updated and upsized equipment necessary to really make it more reliable and long-term asset. Once it's built, it'll become the asset of Lee County Utilities, and we will operate and maintain it from there.
Any questions for Pam?
Just one, just to get it on the record. Did y'all look at the new location to make sure that it's a place that won't be affected by any future redevelopment or rebuilding that's taking place in relation to Hurricane Ian?
That's right. We, we outreach to our Lee Tran partners, and we asked them if we can locate it on their park and ride, which is further inland. We'll also be able to build the electrical equipment higher to keep it out of any type of floodwaters. So we'll, we'll design it with that in mind and hardening so it has long-term reliability.
Okay. Excellent. Thanks. Thanks, Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other?
I'll move the item, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Hammond, a second by Commissioner Greenwell. I'll go to public comment. Any public comment? See, none, I'll close, public comment. I'll bring it back up to the dais. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Next item is 58.
Morning, Commissioners. I'm Joe Adams with the County Attorney's Office. Your public hearing has been properly advertised, and I have the affidavit for your clerk. This is your second and final hearing on this round of plan development amendments. These more broadly permit several uses throughout the county, including food truck parks, microbreweries, and public safety facilities. The first hearing was held on June 3rd at 5:05 PM. If there's any questions, we have to answer them.
Any questions?
I'll move the item, Chairman.
Second. I have a motion to second. I'll go to public comment. Any public comment? See, none. I'll close. Public comment. I'll bring it back up to the deus. I have a motion to second. Any other discussion? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Amanda Swindle with the County Attorney's Office. I have your public hearing item number 60 today. This is to adopt an amendment to the Lee County Parks and Recreation Ordinance that would prohibit smoking and vaping at county parks and public beaches. We currently have a prohibition on smoking in indoor park facilities, and this would expand that prohibition in accordance with Florida statutes.
Any questions for Amanda?
I'll move approval, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion on the floor, a second. I'll go to public comment. I have quite a few cards. We'll start with David Elliott.
Good morning. Appreciate your time today. I don't actually have a specific comment. I just wanted to thank you all for your collaboration and your assistance working with the hospitals related to this item. This is a new process being recommended for the Lee County hospitals. This will allow them to access increased Medicaid rates, which help protect the safety net community here and allow them to provide, to continue, continue to provide these services that are critical for the community, for the hospitals, and for the Medicaid patients here. I'm available for any technical questions. We do represent, my name, I should have introduced myself. I apologize. My name's David Elliott. I'm with Adelanto Healthcare. We represent the private hospitals here within the county and across the state of Florida, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Sir, I think you're one agenda item early.
Oh, I apologize.
We can advance those comments.
No worries. We'll put that one in the memory bank and we'll remember when we get to the next one. There you go. I'm available for questions when it does come up.
Well done, well done.
Thank you, gentlemen. Sally Krujer? I might have sent your last name wrong. Sally? Sorry, I'm trying to read your handwriting.
Good morning. You were close. Sally Krujer.
Thank you.
I'm proud to serve as the Director of Community Health and Benefit at Lee Health, as well as the Chairperson for Tobacco Free Lee. Tobacco Free Lee represents a collaboration of local organizations, excuse me, dedicated to advancing the health of our community. Our partners include many, including the School District of Lee County, the American Heart Association, Drug Free Lee, the Youth Services Coalition, the Florida Department of Health, the Florida National Guard Counter-Drug Program, Florida Southwestern State College, and many others. We strongly support the passage of this important ordinance to protect the health and well-being of our residents, excuse me, under the weather, and to preserve the beauty and charm of our wonderful community. Tobacco use remains one of the leading preventable causes of disease and death, contributing to a wide range of health issues, including cancer, heart disease, respiratory conditions, and stroke. This ordinance is a critical step towards creating healthier environments that reduce exposure to harmful secondhand smoke, which is particularly dangerous for our children, older adults, and those with chronic health conditions. Other nearby areas, including the City of Fort Myers and several neighboring counties, have already adopted similar ordinances. Since the City of Fort Myers implemented their Smoke-Free Parks Ordinance in 2023, the transition has been smooth with minimal enforcement issues. These type of policies help reduce cigarette litter, promote healthier lifestyle choices, and increase quit attempts among those who use tobacco. Moreover, cleaner smoker, cleaner, smoke-free environments enhance the appeal of our community to visitors, potentially boosting the local tourism industry. While these financial benefits are notable, the primary concern is safeguarding public health. Thank you for considering the support in ordinance. We believe it will help make Lee County a healthier, safer, and more vibrant place to live, work, and visit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Orlando Hernandez, please.
Good morning. My name is Orlando Hernandez. I'm a student at Florida Southwestern Collegiate High School, and I'll be entering my sophomore year this fall. My mother's name is Veronica Hernandez, and my father's name is Orlando Hernandez also. I'm proud to be part of a generation that's stepping up and speaking out for a healthier, cleaner, and more responsible future. That's why I'm here today, to voice my support for making our parks and beaches smoke-free. I've spoken on this issue before at the Fort Myers Town Hall, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak again. Because this isn't just a community issue to me. It's a personal one. I grew up with asthma. While I no longer need a carrying inhaler, I still hold on to habits from that time. Even now, I instinctively hold my breath when I walk past people who are smoking or vaping, especially in places like the beach or park. Just trying to breathe becomes uncomfortable. I've had to cut out, lean short, leave areas I was enjoying, or distance myself from others, just avoid feeling sick or getting a headache. And I know I'm not alone. Many kids, seniors, people with asthma allergies deal with the same thing. We all deserve to enjoy our public areas without putting our health at risk. But this isn't just about secondhand smoke. It's also about litter. Cigarette butts are the most littered item on earth, and they don't just disappear. They end up in our oceans, beaches, and even in the mulch that kids play with at the park. They end up in our oceans, on sidewalks, and I've seen them myself, buried in the sand at the beach, floating in the water at local parks. That's not the image we want for Cape Coral. And when smoking and vaping are allowed in these places, we're also sending a message to younger kids that it's normal, that it's okay. I've already seen too many of my friends pick up this nasty habit at our young age. But if we make our parks and beaches smoke-free, we're setting a stronger example. We're telling young people that their health matters, that clean air matters, that we care about protecting the places where families gather and memories are made. Lee County is known for its natural beauty and strong community values. Taking this step shows that we care about keeping it that way, not just for ourselves, but for future generations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Nadia Neves?
Good morning, and my name is Nadia Neves. First, I want to thank you all for considering passing a rule to eliminate smoking and vaping from our local parks and beaches. I feel that it is time, and I know that most of our neighboring counties have passed these ordinances. I'm a teacher in Lee County, and I could talk to you about many different concerns that I see through students' eyes regarding vaping and tobacco. During a field trip to Bunch Beach, students are pointing out the cigarette butt litter and the smell of cigarette smoke. From a teacher's perspective, it's difficult to have to explain to children why the very place we celebrate for their natural beauty are overshadowed by something that we can work toward to prevent from happening. Passing a smoke-free ordinance for parks and beaches isn't just about discouraging smoking. It's about creating cleaner environments, modeling responsible behavior for our children, and showing them that as a community, we prioritize their health and their future. I hope that your decision on this matter will allow me to tell them in the future that locally, we are doing better and protecting this beautiful area that we are fortunate to live in. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next person is Lena Morris.
Good morning, Lee County Commissioners, fellow residents, and guests. My name is Lena Morris, and I am a junior at Gateway High School in Fort Myers, and a proud member of Students Working Against Tobacco. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today to express my strong support for smoke-free parks and beaches. I appreciate that this policy is being considered here in Lee County. As someone who has spent time at many parks and beaches in Lee County, playing soccer, running, and spending time with my friends, I know firsthand the importance of keeping our parks and beaches free from cigarette smoke and vape aerosols. These public spaces are where families, children, and community members come together to play sports, exercise, and just enjoy fresh air. Many non-smokers, especially children, suffer from exposure to outdoor tobacco smoke, experiencing symptoms such as ear infections, nausea, breathing difficulties, and asthma attacks. Tobacco smoke contains over 7,000 chemicals, including hundreds, that are toxic and approximately 70 known to cause cancer. Additionally, vaping was declared a national epidemic by the Surgeon General due to its increasing popularity among youth. Studies confirm that secondhand smoke, whether from traditional cigarettes or vaping, can cause breathing issues and heighten the risk of illness, which is especially concerning for children. Vaping aerosol also contains many harmful substances, and we should not be exposed to these things in our community public spaces. I urge you to prioritize the health and well-being of our community's young people and pass the Smoke-Free Parks and Beaches Ordinance. Together, we can create cleaner, healthier spaces for everyone to enjoy. Thank you, and I sincerely appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you. De'ar Mohamed?
Good morning, Lee County Commissioners, fellow residents, and guests. My name is De'ar Mohamed. I live in Fort Myers, and I attend Gateway High School. I'm also a proud member of the Students Working Against Tobacco. I'm here today to express my strong support for the Smoke-Free Parks and Beach Ordinance, and I would like to share my appreciation for this policy to create healthier outdoor spaces. I ask you to consider that the impact tobacco smoke has on vape aerosols and how, sorry. I ask you to consider the impact that tobacco smoke and vape aerosols have on young people, as well as the environmental damage caused by litter from these products. Our parks and beaches should be places where we can breathe clean air and enjoy our surroundings without harm to our well-being. Yet, cigarette butts and vaping paraphernalia are among the most frequently littered items globally, and these pose serious environmental hazards. Though they're small, cigarette butts contain toxic chemicals that can get into soil and water, threatening wildlife and marine ecosystems. Additionally, when cigarette waste is not disposed of properly, it increases the burden on our sanitation systems, as well as the cleanup costs for our communities. A smoke-free parks and beach policy is a proactive step towards reducing pollution and preserving the integrity of our environment. It also encourages healthy choices and inspires a greater sense of responsibility towards our shared spaces. In conclusion, I urge you to recognize the impact this has on the youth in our community and the health of our environment. Together, we can create a county where every child can play, learn, and grow in a smoke-free, litter-free, and health-conscious environment. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration.
Thank you so much. Marcus Villaforte?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Marcus Villaforte, and I am currently a student studying respiratory therapy at Florida Southwestern State College. I'm here with several of my classmates, which are sitting behind me. We all entered the program to learn how the lungs function and how to prevent lung diseases. And with that comes learning how to take care of those whose lungs have already been compromised. And our, part of our curriculum is learning, is doing our clinical rotations at local hospitals. And each day we are at the hospital, we meet new patients who struggle to breathe. We witness just how much these chronic lung conditions limit their lives. We are also learning how dangerous secondhand smoke can be, especially for those with asthma, COPD, and other respiratory diseases. Some may wonder, what is the big deal with secondhand smoke, especially outdoors, right? The truth is, even outdoor exposure can have serious health consequences. For example, in the U.S. alone, over 3,000 children die each year due to an asthma attack, and secondhand smoke is a well-known trigger. For someone who lives with asthma or COPD, just getting to the park, and it's, and the, just getting to the park is a challenge in itself. But imagine this, imagine you are the person with this lung condition. You finally make it to the park. You take a seat to try to enjoy your view, but you can't. You can't because someone 10, 15, maybe even 20 feet away is smoking. Now, your time there has been cut short because someone has exposed you to these smokes and vapors, making it difficult for you to breathe. We are here today, not speaking for ourselves, but for those who struggle often goes unseen, individuals in our community whose lives are quietly but deeply affected by the air around them. A truly healthy society protects its most vulnerable. We hope you'll support the amendment for smoke-free parks and beaches, not just for us, but for every child with asthma, every grandparent with a lung disease, and every person who deserves enjoy, to enjoy clean air in public spaces. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Nguyen?
Good morning. My name is Kathy Nguyen. As a child, I grew up here in Lee County, and I swam competitively and spent several hours every day at the pool. Most of our practices were at West Knot, which was a city pool. But the pool at Cypress Lake was a county pool back then, back in the Jim Lavender days. For those of us who grew up here, our summer practices for Cypress Lake High School were also at that county pool. During that time in the 70s, many parents sat in the bleachers and smoked while they waited for their kids to, practice to be over. Because I have asthma, that was often a problem for me and other swimmers, breathing issues. Even after my competitive swimming days were over, all through college, I was a lifeguard at the Cypress Lake Pool. And again, there was nothing that prevented parents from smoking on the pool deck during open swim or up against the fence outside watching their kids do swim lessons. But we've come a long way since then. Now, as a longtime swimmer and member of the City of Fort Myers Aquatic Center, I find it admirable that the city did pass in 2023, they unanimously passed the ordinance which banned both smoking and vaping at public parks within the city. At the pool, there is signage to remind visitors of this, and an ashtray outside the gate to reinforce that message. It pretty much is self-enforced. People see the sign. Normally, people will follow the rules. It's commendable that the city already recognizes that it's in everybody's best interest to restrict smoking and vaping from areas where children and other non-smokers and e-cigarette, non-smokers and non-e-cigarette users go to play, participate in sports, and just to have fun outside. But we must also consider our public beaches. Many other municipalities in Florida have already banned smoking on the beaches, whether for public health reasons or environmental reasons. We need to get with the times before we become the county that draws all the smokers to our beautiful beaches. It's common knowledge that exposure to secondhand smoke is detrimental to our health, especially for children. But it's important that we include e-cigarettes under smoke-free laws also. The aerosol, which is not vapor, from the e-cigarettes is a cocktail of chemicals that's not safe for anyone to inhale, and the U.S. Surgeon General has concluded that also. It is not harmless. Children are particularly vulnerable because of their developing lungs. Clean air, free of both smoke and aerosol from e-cigarettes, remains the standard to protect their health. The right to breathe smoke and aerosol-free air should supersede the rights of those who, despite the known health risks, choose to smoke or vape. Often, children do not have a choice or a voice, so we need to do the right thing for them and follow the lead of the City of Fort Myers to important, this important legislation. I thought it was, to me, it was interesting. I didn't know that they were going to have the proclamation for Lee County Parks and Rec today, and it says that parks and recreation are fundamental for health and well-being, so let's make that happen.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Gary Bostic? Gary?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Gary Bostic, and I am the President for the Youth Services Coalition of Southwest Florida, as well as the Youth Head, Senior Mentor for the Youth Commission of Lee County, which is working with young people between the ages of 13 and 14 years old. One of the things I've learned working with young people is that they have a concern about what goes on in their neighborhoods, their schools, and their community. And one of the biggest things that they have a concern about is the area of smoking, and in particular, vaping. Not only are they concerned about the health hazards associated with smoking and vaping, but also the debris that causes to our parks and recrea, and parks and beaches. Before Hurricane Ian, my team group, the Youth Commission, did a beach cleanup at a local beach. Most of the debris we found were Most of the debris we found were cigarette butts. After that were straws, then soda cans, followed by paper or plastic cups. How many times have you gone to a local park and found cigarette butts all over the area where our children and grandchildren play? Not only does this smoking in our park create a health hazard, but it also causes a problem with our ecosystem due to the fact that the filters do not biodegrade and over time. I know many will think, there goes the government taking another, taking away another one of my rights. But don't our children and neighbors with health issues have a right to breathe fresh air, no matter where they go? And no longer is that a right, but it's a necessity to be able to breathe fresh air. I've even experienced the smell of smoke coming from the car in front of me while I'm at a stop sign. Is this issue a problem? In 2022, the FDA reported that more than 2.5 million, millions, middle school and high school students use e-cigarettes. Half were using disposables, adding to the waste accumulating in the environment. That was in 2022. What is that number now? If you did, if you took a look at it, those numbers now include elementary school students. I understand this commission can't ban certain issues that are concerning our state, since that's governed by our state, but you have a say in curtailing smoking and vaping in our parks and beaches in Lee County. You don't always have to rely on data from a study to get proof of the hazards smoke causing or smoking causes. Just ask any student or person suffering from asthma or COPD. I did. I'm listening. Will you? Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Stephanie Wardine? Stephanie?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I must say, this is my first time at the podium, so I wanted to say thank you for hearing the public comment. My name is Stephanie Wardine. I'm the President and CEO of Ronald McDonald House of Southwest Florida, formerly the System Director for Community Affairs at Lee Health. I'm a mother of a very large family, and one of those includes a childhood Down Syndrome, and we've called this our home for more than 20 years. I've had the privilege of serving the first 10 years of what was known as Healthy Lee, the community collaborative, where hundreds of community partners, businesses, and cross-sector representation collaborating for community health, where this ordinance fits for the health and well-being of our community. As immediate past Chair of Tobacco-Free Lee with our friends standing and sitting behind me, and initial partners of Healthy Lee, recently chaired by Gary Griffin, President and CEO of BNI Contracting, Robbie Robstorf before him, and Gary Tripp before her at inception in 2007, I also come before you in support of this ordinance as an appointed member of the Florida Greenways and Trails Council with the Florida State, Florida Department of Environmental Protection, where we learn there's a much broader health and wellness component, and we understand the impacts of a safe and clean and beautiful community, where we have also learned green spaces impact mental health and impacts the opportunities for families to convene. So we're here to demonstrate support for the ordinance and are grateful that it has returned for consideration. We certainly want to ask you to consider including, I believe it is already, vape products in the ordinance. As you heard, there's a unique threat with the chemical components. They are not regulated, and there are different toxins in the liquids, and additionally, we don't know much about the residue that is left over and the circuitry boards and the metals that are included in that. So please consider that with the environmental hazards. Aside from that, I thought it was a very nice opportunity to congratulate you all on bringing this forward, as this particular agenda also celebrates parks and recs, so I wanted to bring that full circle as well. And finally, aside from that, wanted to make note, humans cause nearly 90% of wildfires and brush fires, and was the most common reason for that that we know down here with our brush fires and cigarette butts, that protecting our people, our property, and our paradise is paramount. It also aligns with our rebuilding post Ian and moving forward as leaders in our community for resiliency. So thank you for all you do and continue to do for our community.
Thank you. That concludes all my cards. Does anyone else like to speak on item number 60? Come on up.
Would like to speak on number 24?
Okay.
I pulled out a card.
Sorry.
The Bapa James Center, I would like to know, we're just being done with that since it has closed. I mean, the buildings are still intact. You might have to do some sandblasting if there's any mold or that, but Salvation Army is helping the homeless again. Back in the early 90s, there used to be a program they had that people doing day labor, paid like $10 a day, they had a place to stay. I'd like to see that model, but not maybe Salvation Army, us as a community like buying the old Heritage Park and utilizing it as a hostel, meaning revenue for their housing needs and then rotating it to all the nonprofits and the partners. The Suncoast Community Center had a yard sale that to raise money to keep the doors open, I donated some stuff, plus some mangoes. So Brian, this is for you off my brief.
Go ahead. Appreciate that. Thanks, William.
I've got an option. If someone was like some green for some reason, I've eaten green, and I've eaten, you know, like produce, so I would like to get Echo involved in the property out there. I don't know if Charlie has called you. He's so busy or that. Our plan was to build and that, and putting in the windows, I don't want to just put windows in, I want to do, you know, trailers are hot, so I want to insulate, like do a wall outside, do the cement work pad, so I really need the permits. So that's something that, or waived or whatever, it's to be a continuum of care. It's not my place, even though it's in my name. The Lady Bird thing was set up, if I die, it goes to the community center. I want that revised, that it's aiding our community and a trust for my child and grandchildren from now on. But working together, we can make that change for the needs of Lee County and the city of Fort Myers and beyond. So I thank you for your time, and look forward to you and Charlie and Diane, if she's going to draw up a plan, she's an architect, if not, find somebody that will, and let me know how it costs. I ain't got the money, but like the old general store, I pay on it. Thank you.
I apologize. I didn't see there was number 24 in his card. Thank you. Any other comments on item number 60? I do apologize for missing you. Seeing none, we'll close that. We'll bring it back up to the commission. Any questions? I'll move the item.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I think, did we make the motion before, prior to the public comment? So, and I was happy to, Chairman, if I may, just real quickly, just wanted to thank the members of the community who came out and spoke today. I think they said it best, they said it well, and there's really nothing to add other than just our support, or at least my support to that, for sure. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, I think it's great. I appreciate it. Thanks for keeping me on track. We have a motion, we have a second. We've closed public comment. Any other discussion?
I would also thank the speakers, and it was exciting to see the youth high school students here and all their delegation as well, so I enjoyed that. Thank you for your participation.
Absolutely. Seeing none, anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 61.
Congratulations.
I'm going to follow the agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Rob Holborn with the County Attorney's Office. Your third public hearing today is on item number 61, which has been properly advertised, and a copy of the affidavit provided to the clerk. After receiving a request by the participating hospitals, the board adopted ordinance number 25-07 on April 1, 2025, which established the framework for the Lee County Local Provider Participation Fund. This public hearing is to finalize the rate-setting process for that fund and impose a non-advalerum special assessment on seven private hospitals within Lee County. These funds are then matched by federal Medicaid dollars, and all of it distributed back to the participating hospitals to cover uncompensated medical care costs for the indigent. Without this, the hospitals miss out on Medicaid dollars to service the indigent. The assessment may not be passed along to patients as a surcharge or any other form of patient charge. Assessment is based on patient revenue and is not a tax on the care being provided. Staff is available for any questions that you all may have.
Any questions?
Just to confirm, please, no patient, this fee or this will not show up on any patient's bills?
Correct. The amendment, the resolution you're passing specifically says that it is prohibited from incurring any sort of patient charge in any, any form. And the reality is, is what this is, is that the hospitals are putting forward money, getting it matched, and getting it back. So it's not like they really need to generate the revenue. They're already generating this. They're just providing it to essentially the Fed, getting it matched, and getting it pulled back.
So the hospital fronts the money and then gets matched and then put it back in the bank?
That's essentially it, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval of the item. I'll second.
I have a motion on the floor, by Commissioner Hammond, second by Commissioner Greenwell. Any public comments? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back up to the deus. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now I'll go back to the walk-on item that I missed before. We will convene as the Port Commission. We have six consent agenda items. Would anyone like to pull any of them?
None to pull.
I'll move the balance.
All right, I'll second that.
I have a motion on the floor and a second. I'll go to public comment on Port Commission items, consent agenda item six, there, a walk-on in the agenda. It was necessary for us to do so, to continue doing business at the Port Authority. We're unable to have a quorum on Thursday, so that's the reason for doing so. And for any type of adjustment that was made in the last minute, it was due to a lack of a quorum on Thursday. So with that in mind, close public comment. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, anyone opposed? Seeing none, motion carries unanimously. I'll now convene back as the Board of County Commissioners. I appreciate your help in that regard. Commissioner Items, Commissioner Hammond.
I have none today, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Malika.
I actually have, I have one that was scheduled, and then I have an additional one that kind of fell in my lap this morning. So the first one I have is, I'd like to direct staff to review and bring back on August 5 or 19th, as appropriate, a proposed ordinance that eliminates inefficiencies and reduces redundancies with the permitting of boathouses and related residential dock accessory structures. So essentially a cleanup bill along the lines of the permitting ordinances we're working on.
I'll second. Is that your motion?
Yes, I would like, I would like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion second. Kenny Manager, any comments?
Yes, the only difficulty, we might not be able to bring it back on the 5th, because we will have to go through committees.
I said 5th or 19th. I was open to whichever one is most appropriate. 19th, if it's the 19th, I'll just call it the 19th then.
I'm not sure we'll be able to get through the committees on the 19th, Richard.
Mr. Chairman, if we may, just respectfully request that the motion be amended to direct staff to perform this and then bring back through the public hearing process. Excuse me. The difficulty is, as the manager's pointed out, we have to work through the committees, and then we will also have to get board permission to advertise that work product as a proposed ordinance. So if we could just have the motion amended to direct staff to work on that and bring back a proposed draft for consideration.
So I amend my motion to that effect, the most, the earliest opportunity that's appropriate in the process as described.
Thank you, sir.
And I'll second.
I have a motion and a second.
Thank you for clarifying.
No problem. Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Any other discussion?
Just may I ask, I haven't heard anything about this issue. Could you just fill us in on what's the problem we're trying to solve here? Not that I'm not against it, I just don't know much about it, that's all.
So just to make it simple, a boathouse roof that is built on top of a permitted boat dock requires a, an extra permitting step, and if, if there's not a house on site, you can build a dock on a vacant lot, but you can't put a roof on it the way it's written right now. And I think it's described as an accessory structure, as if it were attached to a house or an attached garage, but it's really just on the top of the pilings that are over the water that's already permitted. So it's just a cleanup bill to that effect to allow you to have shade on your boat.
And I don't, I mean, really am agnostic about it. I don't have any strong feelings either way, but one thing I do remember just from growing up here, there was a big issue, I thought, in Cape Coral years ago about this, about people putting like techie huts or something on their boat docks.
Sizes was blocking view.
Yeah, it was blocking people's views down the canals and stuff like that. I mean, do you foresee any issue with that?
Well, that's kind of all been addressed, because now it's kind of a uniformed tight roof.
Gotcha.
You can't just build a two-story roof without special exceptions and everything.
Okay.
And I basically, what they're doing.
Those canvas covers in the Cape are not even regulated in our.
Gotcha.
Chairman, if I may, continue. What, what, basically, we're already permitting a dock.
Right.
And now, then if you're going to put a roof on that dock, then you have to permit that as well, but it's one structure. So it's just kind of simplifying the permitting process. So that person still would have a right, whether they did it right away or later on, to put a roof on that.
Okay.
That's, that's what it basically comes down to, if I'm understanding it right.
Okay. All right. Thanks, thanks for the explanation. Yeah, just I hadn't, hadn't heard about it yet, that's all.
Yeah, it wasn't the other deal where everybody was getting upset over losing their view of the water.
Okay.
Because, you know, people were just building what they wanted.
Yeah.
Good. Appreciate the comments and explanation clarified.
Sure.
Great deal. Motion and a second, it's on the floor. Any other discussion? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Greenwell, any items? Okay, come back to me. Appreciate everyone's indulgence. You know, the first item we're going to, sorry.
I actually had a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. My bad.
No, I didn't, it was not on the agenda, so. This is a walk-on. So this is, the subject of this next one is regarding the Rotating Deputy Sheriff's Home in Boca Grande. It was brought to my attention that the Boca Grande Disaster Fund and the church groups were raising money to replace the existing sheriff's house at the park out there, and they offered to match Lee County's contribution to the project up to $228,000 if we would match their money for that. And staff has found that the project overall is about $650,000, and we have anticipated funds from insurance and FEMA of between $200,000 and $250,000. So we wanted to support the project for the sheriff to get the house rebuilt out there, but I'm just asking for your support to basically front the money that we have coming from insurance and FEMA to get the project built faster rather than waiting for the money for the construction to start. It's just really a timing sequencing thing, but the disaster fund will match us with that. And then if there's, let's just pretend we put up 250, and they put up 250 already, that they would raise the difference themselves, that they wouldn't ask us for any more money. They're going to raise the other 150 with their partners out there. So this is, my motion is to allow direct staff to work with them, and then have the ability to front the money ahead of FEMA reimbursement to support the project.
Sounds like a great idea, first time I'm hearing about it. So I don't have any objections whatsoever. Thank you.
Sure.
So we're just putting the money out, but getting reimbursed?
We know we have the money coming. We don't know which month we're going to get it, but if we tell them they have the money now, then we could be in permitting design, construction faster if they could get the project. If they knew they had that money, they could chase the rest and move the project up faster on the timeline, so.
Any other items we need to? Kenny Manager, anything?
No, I have, no.
Thank you.
That's my last item.
Okay, so that's a motion.
Yes.
I'll gladly second it, the motion is second. I'll go to public comment. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. I'll bring it back up to the deus. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, appreciate it. The next item is Boca Grand Parking. It's my commission item, I have two. And I know there's been a lifelong discussion about Boca Grand Parking, and I know we're going to do that in August. Just for clarity purposes, having worked on this for most of the time since I've been here, I just want for clarity to attach the most recent addition of the ordinance and the proposed item that's referred to. I think you all may have received an email from Brent Cross. With that was an attachment of over 1,000 people that supported this piece of legislation. It's been endless emails and obviously there was even a public meeting, and I do apologize. Definitely ran into a lot of personal issues that I never encountered, so I wasn't able to attend, but I know there attended. Today is really just, my motion is to put this item out for public, obviously reading it and the ability to talk on that particular piece of legislation on August 5th. Nothing more, I'm not going to debate this item, we'll do that in August. But the item that I'm looking forward to is a revised version, I think it's the most accurate of what we are, and that's my motion to move that item.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. With that in mind, I'll go to public comment. Public comment, the first card I have is Hugh Sullivan.
We'll step out for a second, you need to use a restroom.
So the first speaker is Hugh Sullivan, and after you will be Kathy LaPointe.
Morning Commissioners, my name's Hugh Sullivan. As you've heard, you've already heard a lot from us, so I'm going to, we're all going to this brief this morning. We do understand, and I hope you understand, there's a lot of passion around the island around this issue, both about the need to deal with the stresses created by overcrowding due to growth of nearby communities, and by the importance of making sure that any solution is workable in the confines that are created by the historic layout of our island and the needs of various community groups to be able to operate effectively. There's been a lot of work done since April 1st, that's reflected in the draft you have. Today we have a very simple message. The major issues around structured parking have been thoroughly vetted on the island. Compromises have been reached, and there's now a broad consensus supporting a community-backed amendment to the Boca Grand parking ordinance. Since April 1st, we've had meetings between neighbors and the churches about their use of the Gilchrist medium, and there's been a solid agreement reached there. That agreement was announced by the churches at the kickoff to a community meeting held to discuss the parking ordinance about four or five weeks ago. An email has been sent that contains the draft of the community-backed ordinance that you have in front of you to as many members of the community as we can reach. We don't have everybody's email. We included with it a description of the key attributes of the proposal, as well as a long list of frequently asked questions about how it would affect various aspects of island life. The reaction to that was that over 1,000 people signed or added their names to the email that was sent to you requesting that you adopt the ordinance without major adjustments. Today you're going to hear from the president of the Boca Grand Women's Club, the president of the Boca Grand Health Clinic, and the president, and the president of the Gasparilla Island Conservation Improvement Association. You're going to hear from somebody who grew up on the island, who spent decades now working to conserve and improve it. And you're also going to hear from one of the island business owners that actually lives on the island. And you'll hear that most of the business owners who live on the island are very supportive of this ordinance. Given the broad support, we have a simple request. Please make this the subject of the hearing on August 5th so that it's clear what people should be commenting upon. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kathy LaPointe, followed by Mark Driscoll. Good morning.
Good morning, and thank you for this opportunity to speak with you. My name is Kathy LaPointe, and I serve as the president of the Boca Grand Women's Club. The Women's Club is an organization that was founded in 1948 and with the mission of the enlightenment and the improvement of the Boca Grand community. It is an honor to serve the nearly 400 women who are active or sustaining members. Since its inception, the Women's Club has dedicated thousands of volunteer hours annually and contributed to dozens of nonprofit organizations, both on and off island, through our community grants program. We have been likened to the United Way in our support of island entities. In addition, we have an ongoing commitment to what now numbers hundreds of students through our scholarship program. Their support, this support makes their college education attainable. And last fall, after the two hurricanes, our board voted to make a generous gift to the Boca Grand Disaster Fund. And the purpose of that fund, as you know, was to restore our business community on the island by helping to the merchants clean up and repair their properties and get back in business. We are only one nonprofit, however. We, there are 40 nonprofit organizations on our 2.2 square mile island.
Wow.
This striking statistic illustrates how much the community cares for one another. Whether it's a place of worship, a place for the community to gather, a preschool, an elementary school, a health facility, or a downtown business, we all support each other within our community. At a special meeting of the Women's Club Board of Directors on June 6th, we voted unanimously in support of the community-backed amendment. We did this because we believe the amendment is consistent with the mission of our club. We hope you, our elected representatives, will also support this amendment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mark Driscoll?
Good morning Commissioners, my name is Mark Driscoll. I'm the CEO of the Boca Grand Health Clinic. Thank you for the time today, and also thank you for your support as our health clinic has navigated the building approval process for our clinic of the future. That help was instrumental as we start construction. I'm here to, today in support of the community-backed amendment, and also to echo the endorsement of the Boca Grand Health Clinic Foundation's Executive Committee, which sent you all a letter. Two of those key items in that letter, the proposed amendment aligns with the goals of preserving the unique character, safety, and accessibility of our island community by addressing parking congestion, protecting pedestrian pathways, and maintaining the quality of life for residents, visitors, and local businesses. We believe this amendment enhances public safety while supporting improved access to care, both of which are central to our mission of providing personalized primary and same-day urgent healthcare to Gasparilla Island residents and workers. Parking challenges are not abstract for us. We do have challenges on occasion with people using the clinic parking lot for beach parking, as well as other people using our parking lots. Really, one of the key things for our operational teams is when our physicians and our nurses do home visits, there are issues with blocked driveways and mobility, accessibility for our teams creating challenges for us. We strive to make a difference in our community and improve the quality of life on the island, and that includes advocating for practical solutions that support the health, safety, and accessibility of the places we all care about. The Boca Grand Health Clinic and the Boca Grand Health Clinic Foundation support the community-backed amendment. Thank you again for your time and everything you do for our island.
Thank you. Mr. Steve Nichols?
Good morning. I'm Misty Neighbors Nichols, and I'm the executive director of the GICIA. I've been there for almost 28 years. I'm also proud to be part of a generational Boca Grand family. I was born and raised in Boca Grand, just as my parents were. My mom's, my dad's mom was born on Cole Island in 1912, and after she married my granddad, they lived in the Gasparilla fishing community at the north end of the island. That's where my dad was born. They relocated their general store and post office to Placida in 1944. My brother and I are fifth generation on my mom's side, which goes back to the Charlotte Harbor area. My great-grandfather was elected as a Charlotte County Commissioner in the 20s and served for 18 years. My mom's parents moved to the island in the 1930s. My grandfather was a fisherman and later managed the local fish house with my grandmother. She assisted in the, in the market on Park Avenue for 50 years. My parents still reside on the island. They owned and operated the only gas station there for more than 40 years. They sold it in the late 90s. Dad said he couldn't retire, mom didn't want him home for lunch, so he went to work for Lee County Mosquito Control and worked for 20 years as the officer on Boca Grand. At 85, my mom is the oldest native-born resident still living on Boca Grand today. She's very proud of that. And she says she has seen it all. On behalf of the GICIA and my family, I'm here to speak in favor of the community-backed amendment. The GICIA has worked for 50 years to preserve the culture, tradition, small-town atmosphere of the Gasparilla Island. The passage of the Act, which limited height and density, has been successful in protecting the small-town charm of Boca Grand. But the unbridled growth of communities just off-island, combined with the allure of the island's pristine, pristine beaches and old Florida charm, is without doubt causing increased congestion. Left unchecked, unsustainable tourism will overwhelm the island's limited infrastructure, threaten its natural resources, reduce residents' quality of life, and compromise visitors' experience. A structured, structured parking plan will ease congestion and preserve the characteristics that both residents and visitors find attractive and charming about Boca Grand. Please help us preserve our little island and support the community-backed plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Louis Sarkis?
Thank you. I'm Louis Sarkis, and I live in the heart of Boca Grand on East Rowood Avenue. And I'm here today on behalf of the many residents of Boca Grand who overwhelmingly support a structured parking plan. I've spoken from this podium before, and again, I want to emphasize, this is not a matter of convenience. It's a matter of public safety and environmental responsibility. Boca Grand is a tiny, fragile, barrier island. The plan before you reflects the input of residents who love our island and want to preserve it. It's guided by safety and stewardship and not politics. We urge you to listen to the voices of our community and move the community-backed amendment forward for approval, for comment at the August 5th meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Bo Jemis? Vote.
Hello, gentlemen. My name is Boo James. You're close, really close. I'm not going to reiterate what's been said so eloquently today. I'm speaking to you on behalf of, I've grown up on Boca Grand for 40 years, coming as a vacationist, and moved my business from New York, Westchester County, to Boca Grand. I have a clothing business on the island, so I'm speaking on behalf of a island resident as well as a merchant on the island. And I will please, please ask you, I think when I was here earlier this spring, we talked about a comprehensive plan. We have gone so far forward from where we were with so much confusion to now a comprehensive plan, and I ask you to take it forward on August 5th. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Bruce Carboni? And then the last speaker is Neil Montgomery, that I have cards for.
Carbonary.
Carbonary.
Sorry, sir. Uh, thank you, gentlemen. I am the president of the GICIA, and I'd like to read a letter that the board put together. In the early 1970s, a group of island residents came together with a mission to preserve the charm, character, and traditions of Gasparilla Island. They formed the GICIA in 1971, marking the beginning of a grassroots effort to preserve island life. With the assistance of Lee County Commissioners, state representatives, the GICIA successfully secured the passage of the Gasparilla Island Conservation District Act of 1980. In the act, the state legislation stated that conservation of the natural beauty, plant, marine, animal, and bird life of the island is in the best interest of the residents, property owners of the island, as well as the citizens of Lee and Charlotte Counties and the state of Florida. This statement remains true today. While the act has been successful in limiting the development of Gasparilla Island, the growth, the growth occurring within 25 miles of the island is rapidly accelerating. Northport is the second fastest-growing city in the United States, and Charlotte County is the fifth fastest-growing region in the United States. This growth, combined with the popularity of Boca Grand's beaches and quaint island atmosphere, is leading to increased congestion. Our fragile island is only 2.2 miles, square miles, and we need your help to continue to preserve it and small character and natural beauty. The GICIA Board of Directors has thoroughly discussed the draft community-backed amendment and unanimously supports that document. That draft ordinance has been well circulated throughout the community by the Boca Beacon and the Boca Grand Chamber. The town hall meeting at the church, which many of you were there, on May 13th was well-attended, and a majority of the property owners in attendance had read the, this amendment and the parking ordinance and spoke in favor of it. Additionally announced was the, what made the meeting so successful, after 15 years of being deadlocked, the churches and the Gilchrist neighbors have reached a compromise, which is huge, and now the community can back it. Therefore, the GICIA Board encourages each of you as our elected representatives to assist in preserving island life by supporting the community-backed amendment. We also hope that once an ordinance is passed, you will remain open to feedback from the Boca Grand community, as it will be essential to evaluate the effectiveness of the ordinance in preserving Boca Grand quaint, small charm. Two other things, I'd like to thank you. First, for the, the actions of the county after our hurricanes this year, you guys did a great job. You really helped us. You know, Chief CW Bowser, Lieutenant Mike, Doug Bugsby from your staff, they were incredible to get us back to our homes and whatnot. It was a really, really difficult time. And then I'd like to also thank you for bringing our community together on this. You know, it was a hard struggle. We've been at this for 15 years with parking, and now we have community consensus around something that we think is fair for everyone. And there was a lot of compromise in there and a lot of negotiations within the community, and you all have been part of this whole thing. So we're ready on August 5th to move on and start working on the hard part of this, and that's the enforcement part. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Last speaker is Neil Montgomery.
Good morning, Neil Montgomery, for the record. I visited at the insistence or encouragement of some of the folks in the room, Boca Grand, on the weekend to see what it was like. And what I saw was haphazard, overused, police officers at the end of certain street trying to correct certain situations. So I could see that there was a problem. And so that, because there's a problem, it does allow the county to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the citizens and visitors. And this has apparently been a problem for a long time, because if you look at your comprehensive plan on objective 19.3, there's a whole section in the comp plan on parking on Boca Grand, and it says that the county is to create safe and efficient parking for its employees, patrons, and visitors. That isn't happening now, and so that's why I think this effort has come forward. And there's also policies that talk about the fact that the county's going to provide assistance to the community to develop a long-term strategy to address the parking problem through regulations. And there's other policies about making it safe for residences on the beach access streets. So you have in your comprehensive plan, policies already in place encouraging you and allowing you to do what the citizens are asking you to do. And I would say this, having been involved in a lot of controversial things, I was amazed at the work that the community did amongst themselves. Nobody wins everything and nobody loses everything, but they worked together to come up with something that was consensus that everybody could stand behind, which I think is admirable, because that, as you guys know, that doesn't always happen very often. So I would encourage the board to support moving forward with the draft the community has come up with.
Those are all my cards that I have. Anyone else like to speak on this issue? Raise your hand. I don't see anybody, I'll close public comment, bring it back up to the deus. Any other discussion?
Can I just clarify, when, you're just adding this to be considered?
Can I just clarify? You're just adding this to be considered on the August 5th agenda for staff?
Yeah, my motion is to make sure we have the right ordinance and updated that was really yet to talk about it August 5th. That's the only thing.
So the staff attorney's office is going to review the document?
Absolutely. And we'll have a public hearing, and everyone can speak, and we can take their comments into consideration. This is just for clarity purposes. This is the most recent updated thing. It was sent to us, and after a thousand signatures, I just thought it was for clarity purposes.
Yeah, no, I admire the work and effort, and that was a very powerful statement. I just want to make sure that that document was not drafted by our staff and give them a chance to go through that, make sure we have it properly. So that's... thank you.
Thanks. Chairman, if I may, you know, as the second or the motion too, you know, I wanted to clarify that, you know, my intention here in seconding the motion was to make sure that the draft that was given to us on June 2nd, 2025, that that is the draft that will be advertised for the public hearing, that we would be, if the votes are in favor of it, able to pass that draft at the meeting, or amended, or whatever, you know, we're able to do at the meeting. But I want to make sure that that's the document, the one that, you know, we were sent with a thousand signatures in support of, that we will vote on that one at the meeting. And the reason why that's important to me is because the community has accomplished what I've always wished they would accomplish in, you know, the twelve years that I've been a part of this issue. And that is, they've come together and built some consensus. You know, you're never going to get a hundred percent consensus, but they've built some consensus on the island. And so I think, you know, in appreciation of the work that they did to create this community-backed amendment, that's the one that I want to be able to vote on and give it its day at the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I may have misunderstood. I thought this was being added to the one what you already had as an additional document and not a replacement of the original work. And the reason I ask that to be a possible consideration is that we were going to have the original hearing on May 20th, and you weren't able to be here, so we deferred it to... you wanted to defer it till June. And then we moved it to August because Commissioner Pendergrass couldn't be here. And we said this was an important matter for all five of us to be present for. So I don't think making a major change in his absence is the spirit of what we were deferring the item to. So I might add it for the discussion, but I don't think we should necessarily replace it in his absence.
My motion, certainly, David, was to have this be the sole document for us to review and consider in our August 5th. As someone that was given this authority three-plus years ago, this is the version that certainly depicts the work that I've worked with staff on and clearly, you know, clarifies everything. And I thought, after having it sent to us by Brent Cross and with over a thousand signatures, it represented what the community wanted. So that's what I was trying to move forward for clarity purposes.
I was only trying to be respectful to Commissioner Pendergrass.
I'm sorry?
I was only trying to be respectful to Commissioner Pendergrass in his absence. Not... I'm not saying anything for or against the great efforts that have been brought to us. It was...
Yeah, I believe we have the opportunity on August 5th to change, enhance, delete, do whatever thing. If I'm stating something incorrectly, can the attorney please advise me?
Ms. Chairman, board members, you're fundamentally correct in the sense that we... if the motion passes, we now know which ordinance to put forward for public advertising. Now, please acknowledge that we'll have to go through that draft and put it into ordinance format. So there may be some ministerial changes you'll see in the formatting of the ordinance, but the substance would remain the same. You would conduct the public hearing on the 5th for the purpose of hearing that proposed ordinance. As with all public hearings on ordinances, the board is free to amend, delete, adopt as written, as it sees fit. The only asterisk to that comment would be if the changes are substantive in their nature and major substantive changes, it may be necessary to continue the public hearing and re-advertise those changes. But if the board is going to adopt the ordinance substantially as written and presented on that day, then you would be in a position to do so.
So just for clarity, I was just trying to have the most recent updated amendment that was available, that certainly conflicted.
We just need to know which one to advertise.
The one that I submitted as commissioner comments, the one that we received from Brent Cross is the same in nature with a thousand signatures. Yes?
Chairman, if I may. In all due respect to Commissioner Pendergrass, I understand what he's saying. Everybody wants to be here on this vote. But we narrowed it down, and that's what we've been trying to do since the day I appeared on the board, and I'm sure since many of you have been on the board. And I think to see a community do what they've done, that we've all tried to push forward and try to say, you know, you can't get in with five people at the end and win the fight. And this community has really got together, and I think it's special. I really do. And it comes down to a very simple thing for me, is we've gotten to this point. We have something that I think majority seems to want. It's what we all, as commissioners, want to see our communities do. So I think we've narrowed it down, let's put it up there, let's do it. We can always vote no. We can always start over, but we're at a point now where we can actually get something done. And I think that would be a mistake to kick it down the road. So I want you to know I one-hundred percent support getting this as advertised here for us to be able to vote on. And hopefully, in that meeting, we have all five commissioners, so...
Respectfully, I didn't know you couldn't piggyback both of them into a public hearing.
I think we've just narrowed it down.
That's fine. I just wanted to be respectful of Commissioner Pendergrass. He's worked on this project for the last twelve years too, and I didn't want to make substantive changes in his absence out of respect for him, just like we did when you were out of town, so...
We all have the luxury of working in our districts. This is something that I've worked on. This is something I've been focused on. This is probably one of the things that is nice to see to come together. I haven't been here nearly as long as Commissioner Hammond or Pendergrass. I appreciate that. But this is something I just want for clarity purposes. And I look forward to the debate on the 5th, and whatever takes place, takes place. It's just to move this item. So that... any other comments?
No, I support that.
So we have a motion, a second on the floor. Any other discussion? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item, and again, I do this out of efficiency. We run into different situations. In my absences, TDC chair, there's been conversations to approve $2 million for TDC reserves to help pay for the Challenger Field. It's an adapted baseball field that we could keep at Hatchie Park, sorry. Other partners, and obviously the construction cost. We're being generously given by the Boston Red Sox, the Minnesota Twins, the Health... There's a lot of organizations. I generally don't want to do anything out of turn or out of anything due to necessity, due to the time-sensitive of this matter. I want to be efficient and move this item forward. So with that in mind, I'm going to make a motion that we approve to use $2 million worth of TDC reserves to obviously help with all the other funding that we receive for Challenger Field.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, a second.
Go for it. Let's let Mike second that. It's baseball.
I heard Red Sox, sorry.
Yeah.
There you go.
Thanks, Commissioner. I'll second.
I'd gladly get your second, since you beat me three times this week. Got it. Little joke. We'll go to public comment. Any public comment on this item? Come on up.
Chair. Commissioners, my name is David Brown, president, co-founder of Family Initiative. Thrilled for this action this morning. This action stands for a lot more than just a wonderful baseball field. This opens a door for opportunities for greater acceptance and inclusion in the unshakable belief in our community that our kids have the right, all of them, to play ball and live up to their God-given belief and value. This past April, we hosted the Autism Acceptance Awards. And of course, for us, Lee County Government, Commissioner Mulica, presented with the autism champion and award. So to us, it means the world, again, for the county to continue to be really leaders on this issue. And again, I think this ball field will be a phenomenal thing, and we're excited about the prospect of that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you do. Thank you.
Any other public comment? If not, I'll close it. Any other discussion? Anyone opposed?
Sounds like a home run.
No, I love it. What a great idea. Thank you for taking that, moving this forward.
No problem. Thank you. With that in mind, there's no objections. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. County manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have two items today. The first one, I would like to take the opportunity to thank one of our employees. Mark Mora and I had the opportunity last month to attend the Association of State Flood Plane Managers Conference. And our very own Billy Jacoby won the local Flood Plane Manager of the Year award, mostly due to her work and her team's work ensuring that we did not get on probation and that we kept our CRS rating. So I really wanted to thank her and her team for all the great work. And our second item is, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Salier.
Thank you. Commissioners, as you know, the state legislature finally put session to bed, and we're pleased to report that Lee County has fared very well in the proposed budget. And so we do thank the delegation for funding seven of your eight legislative budget requests. We'd like to authorize the chairman to send a letter to the governor supporting those requests. We anticipate him acting very quickly and exercising veto authority prior to the beginning of the state's fiscal year. So if you would authorize Chairman Rulane to send the attached letter to the recap, we would appreciate that. Thank you.
So moved.
I'll second that as well. We have a motion, a second on the floor. It's really just thanking the governor and continuing to ask for his support for the projects, obviously, that the legislators put some dollars aside for and hopefully go through that process without any items being removed. But I appreciate the delegation and all they did this upcoming session. I'm very, very happy with their ability to offer us assistance.
Yeah, I was very excited to see the... in a very difficult year, obviously, on day one-hundred-and-five of our sixty-day session. Nobody's happier than me to have that be over, and my wife on the way home. But to get over sixteen million dollars allocated to us in a very difficult, challenging year, I think is a testament to our... Glenn and his team, and our delegation teamwork. So, well done. Thank you so much.
I have a motion, a second. Any public comment? See, no, I'll close public comment. I'll bring it back up to the desk. Any other discussion? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Any other items, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have no further items.
County attorney?
Nothing further today, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Wonderful. We'll go on to public participation by citizens on other matters. I have a couple cards. Philip Iric, Burnsthor Road.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Philip Iric, and my mother-in-law was killed on the two-lane stretch of road, a burn store road between Van Buren Parkway and Vincent Avenue two weeks ago today. That segment, owned and operated by Lee County, or owned and controlled by Lee County, it's the only part of this corridor that has not been widened. To the south, you expanded to four lanes. To the north, Charlotte County did the same. But right in the middle, where drivers, families, and emergency responders rely on it daily, you've done next to nothing. You repaved it, you posted signs, but that's not safety. That's delay dressed up as progress. After the crash, the FHP investigator told us that this road really needs to be widened here. That message matches what your own study confirms. The F.PDNE study shows that this 5.7 mile stretch has had multiple fatal crashes and serious crashes since 2019. It already carries more than fourteen thousand vehicles daily, a number that's projected to double by 2045. And just yesterday, Fox Four reported that this section may soon be labeled as a failing road. But for my family, it has already failed. This road is also a hurricane evacuation route. When storms threaten, this bottleneck becomes deadly. Yes, major roadwork takes time, but the real problem isn't engineering, it's urgency. This study wraps up this summer. The design is funded, I've seen it. Yet there is still no land or right-of-way acquisition, no construction budget, no public timeline. Meanwhile, new development continues to be approved nonstop by this board. Thousands of homes, businesses, and cars are being funneled into a dangerous bottleneck. It's reckless, it's indefensible, and it's unsustainable. One of you recently told Wink News, and I quote, "We're building it as fast as we can based on the money we have available, but this road could cost almost $300 million," end quote. Then what's the plan to secure this money? You found 2.6 million for stadium seats, eight and a half million for splash plads and playground shade structures. You sit on 138 million in transportation bonds. This county has a $481 million road plan with 113 million from impact fees. The money exists. The issue is priority. If developers profit, they must help fund the roads their projects depend on. Adopt mandatory cost-sharing, make it a condition of approval, not an afterthought. If this road matters, you need to start acting like it. Apply for federal grants like REIS and INFRA. Use the bonds, use the fees. Stop choosing photo op projects over lifesaving ones. You've had the data, you've had the time, and now you've heard from a family who paid the price of your inaction. Find the funding, widen the road, finish the job, and above all, move faster before another family gets the call that shattered ours. Thank you.
Thank you. Angela Tarte? Angela?
Good morning. My name is Angela. This is now the third time that I'm standing before you guys asking for basic transparency and accountability from Lee County regarding what happened to my cat, Kevin. By now, almost everyone in this room is familiar with Kevin's case, and yet I still do not have any answers. I have submitted formal public records requests, I've emailed county managers, assistant county manager, the director of animal services, director of community engagement, and every commissioner more than once. The only reply I've received was a generic message from the manager of professional standards and compliance on behalf of you guys, stating that the matter is under review and that I will be kept informed as appropriate slash necessary. So I've not been given a timeline, I've not been given any information or any findings. I have specifically asked for the internal investigation results promised by Mark Mora, confirmation of whether Kevin's examination was by a licensed veterinarian before he was euthanized since a medical condition was listed as the reason for his euthanasia. The exact shelter policy is in place on May 15th and whether they were followed, whether staff are being held accountable, including the person who made the decision for his euthanasia, and if the Thursday body pickups scheduled played any role in how quickly he was killed. None of these questions have been answered, not one. Even the director of LCDAS, the person in charge of this facility, has yet to publicly acknowledge any part of this case. He sat silently at the last commissioner meeting while a policy change clearly triggered by Kevin's death was announced by someone else, and he showed up with a dog for a photo op but had nothing to say about a preventable death in his own facility. This is a pattern of avoidance and not transparency. It's a pattern of protectionism, not accountability. And here's what's worse, in my opinion. Lee County Sheriff's Office has an animal cruelty task force. They make public statements about prosecuting animal abuse and protecting those who cannot protect themselves. But who is investigating cruelty when it's happening inside our own taxpayer-funded shelter? When an animal dies because of your shelter, when a family is robbed of their pet without warning or process, that's cruelty too. We are... or are we just calling it policy so it doesn't have to be reported? If I had done what your staff had done and killed a healthy animal without a vet authorization, I would be in handcuffs. This county cannot promote animal welfare on one hand while excusing neglect on the other, and you can't preach compassion while hiding behind silence and procedure. This community deserves better. The animals at our care deserve better, and Kevin, who was loved, cared for, and wanted, deserves so much better. If your system allows for this to happen, then your system is broken. And I will keep speaking as often as needed until this county finally does what it's promised to do so, which is serve the public with truth, integrity, and compassion. It has been thirty-three days since Kevin was killed in Lee County Domestic Animal Services, and I have not received any information regarding this. I have been begging for communication. I am not here for court drama.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one last card. David Swawski. David?
Good morning, commissioners. My name is David Swawski. I was born and raised in Salles, Florida. It's very uncomfortable for me. I don't really want to be here, but I felt compelled to express myself. I believe this community is being targeted, like many other communities around the nation, by private equity companies. I work in commercial HVAC. I work in commercial HVAC, and nearly all of them have been influenced, backed by or owned by private equity. But it's not just that. My pediatrician when I was young took care of my four sisters and my other brother. His mom and pop, doctor's office, been around in the community for a long time. My parents trusted them, and they, instead of the owners, when they wanted to retire, offering their staff to buy them out, they sold their business to what you, Clayton, Dubler, and Rice, or what you might call Physician Millennium Group. I'm now trying to look for employment in the commercial HVAC industry, but it's really hard to do research online because these companies are not transparent with their ownership. There are, sorry. I don't want to target out individual companies, but I think it's important to bring up examples. Conditioned Air, private equity backed and then owned. CFS Mechanical, private equity backed and then owned. Best Home Services, private equity backed. I don't know if they're owned. I don't know which companies are locally owned and operated and which ones are being influenced by big money out of state. These, these private equity companies change the culture of the businesses, they put debt into these companies, they don't care about the employees or the clients. And I think that, especially with any government contracts, it should be important to know where the money's actually going, the profit, because it's not staying here, it's going somewhere else. So with that, that's all I wanted to make my cause known.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Send no, I'll close public comment. Bring it back up to the desk. Next item is, we have a workshop this afternoon at 1:30?
Correct.
In East Room. I would urge everyone to come and attend. There's been a lot of misinformation out there, and hopefully we clarify it today in the hearing. There is a balanced budget, there's a lot of things to look forward to, so I appreciate it. Any other items before this party? We're adjourned, I'll see you at 1:30. Thank you all.